Okay, Mr. Feinberg, we're live on YouTube. I'm going to start the webinar.
Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the March 18th, 2021 Board Business and Conference Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. And welcome to our distinguished guests this evening. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Blythe here?
Here.
Ms. Larson? Ms. Larson?
Ms. Larson is, uh, won't be attending this evening. She wasn't.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Sinta?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
And Mr. Feinberg?
Here. Thank you, Bob. I'll accept the motion to approve the official minutes from the March 4th, 2021 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Sinta moves.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Dr. Rishi, what do we have for student recognition this evening?
Another exciting evening tonight, Mr. Feinberg. We have two groupings of students, one at the elementary level, one at our high school level. To share, that we're excited to share with you some of the work they've completed, the programs that they are involved in. And we're going to get started right away with three students who are here tonight from Lynnwood Elementary School. We have Molly Moore, Graham Gertz, if you just kind of raise your hand when we say your name, and Aurora Golden. And each year at Lynnwood, students choose an influential African American to research. They learn about the person's childhood, their adulthood, their triumphs and accolades. And this particular project is a cross-curricular project involving language arts, social studies, and art. And in the past, the students have been able to do their research, present it all on a trifold board set up in the cafeteria. And many of us have participated by being able to go over and speak with the children and and hear all about what they have learned about. And of course, this year was a little bit different. But these students were able to take that information and create a walkthrough museum in their hallways all throughout Lynnwood. So we're going to hear a little bit about, about what they have done. Their teachers are here, Mr. Huddlemire, Ms. Goldblatt, Ms. Carroll, who have worked with them, Mrs. Ben Gilbury, the building principal is here. So, Mrs. McGilbury, I don't know if you want to tell us how, how we'd like to get started with, so that we can hear a little bit from the students. And then usually, our board members might ask one or two questions on the students about their work.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Rishi. How about Molly? Would you get us started and tell us about your project, please?
I'm Molly, and I'm doing my Black History Month project on Cheryl Swoops, a basketball player. Three facts I learned about her was that she was the first person to sign a contract to play in the WNBA. She was the first female to have her own Nike shoe, and she played for the Houston Comets for 11 years and won four championships with them. She was born in 1971 in Brownsville, Texas, and in 1996, she won her first Olympic gold medal in Atlanta, Georgia. She also won gold in the 2000 and 2004 Olympics in Sydney, Australia, and Athens, Greece. I compared Cheryl to Michael Jordan because she is called the Michael Jordan of women's basketball. They both played basketball, but Cheryl was born in Texas in wall number 22, and Michael was born in North Carolina in wall number 23. Here's a picture of them, and this is a picture that I drew of her. My favorite part about this project was learning about someone who I didn't know about before. Thanks for watching.
Good job, Molly.
Thank you, Molly. Dr. Rishi, would you like to do questions right now or after the, all three?
Maybe we could go through the three and then we can ask, you know, a couple of questions.
All right. That sounds great. Thank you, Molly. Graham, would you please talk with us about your project?
Sure. Thank you for having me. For my project, I learned about Thurgood Marshall, a former Supreme Court Justice. I compared him to Sandra Day O'Connor because they're both Supreme Court justices of firsts. Um, Thurgood was born in 1908, and he argued Board of Education of Topeka in 1957. And my favorite part of my board was my Word Cloud because it's very colorful and it gets a lot of details. Thank you for listening to my thing.
Yay, Graham.
Great job, Graham. Thank you for sharing with us. And Aurora, will you please share your project with us?
Oh, Aurora, we can't hear you, so you've been.
I know.
Perfect.
For Black History Month, I did Anna Judge because I had recently read a book about her. Um.
Did you have a favorite part of the book?
Um. I liked learning about her because, um, I thought it was interesting that she, um, was able to get away from George Washington and, uh, not get caught. Um. She, um, she was, she, after, when she ran away, she got on a boat and sailed to New Hampshire away from Philadelphia. And she spent the rest of her life there, um, as a free woman. She, um. Even though, um, George Washington looked for her for a while, he could never catch her even though he knew where she was. Thank you.
Thank you, Aurora. Well done.
Good job, Aurora. And now, one or two of our board members might want to ask a little bit of question, little questions, maybe about some background, how the, how the project got started. We'll open it up to our board.
I'd love to know how you chose. Did you choose your research or was it given to you by your teacher? Molly, you can go first. Did you pick the basketball player or was it, was she given to you?
Uh, I got to pick her, and I'm really interested in basketball, and I thought it was the perfect pick.
Did you know about her before you picked her?
No, I was just looking on Pebblego, and I saw her. I read a little bit about her, and I was like, ooh, this is really cool.
I'm with you, Molly. Good job. Thank you. I can't find our other student. Graham, how about you? Did you pick yours or was it given to you?
I picked mine, and I chose him because he's a very brave person, even though there's a lot of discrimination. And also because I fancy, I have an interest in becoming a lawyer.
Okay. Did you see the latest movie about him? That, um, I think it's just pretty recent called Judge Marshall. I guess you haven't seen it yet.
No.
No. And where is Aurora? Is she still here?
Yes, Ms. Minji, she is.
Okay, Aurora, how did you, you said you read a book. Where did you find the book to read about your, your, um, your person?
Um, we were at a bookstore and, uh, we were, we were just looking for books, and this was a long time before the project. And so, um, I had read about her, and then, um, the project came up, and I just thought of her for the project.
Well, Aurora, that's excellent. And you know, you taught me something tonight. So always remember that while you are a student, you can also be a teacher. I did not know that story, and I'm happy to know it. So thanks to all you guys. It was a great job. Thank you.
Yeah. Excellent work. Thank you. Thank you, Lynnwood students, for joining us tonight and for sharing and helping us to learn something new. Alright, everyone. Thank you so much. And we also have two of our high school students with us this evening. And both of our high school students are involved in the Delaware County Technical Schools Program. We have Tommy Disler, who is involved in automotive technology. Aiden is involved in the school's carpentry program. And both are involved, engaged in a co-op right now. So I'm going to ask each of them to just talk a little bit about it. You, you've seen how the other students talked about their, the work they were involved in, and then we'll give our board members an opportunity to learn a little bit more about this exciting opportunity that's available to, to our students. Tommy, if I ask you to get us started?
Thank you for us.
You think you're, yeah, I think so.
Aiden's still there.
Alright, so maybe, Aiden, if you can get us going. Thanks, Mr. Dunninge. Aiden, if you can get us going, and then we'll see if we can get some help.
Oh, hi. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much, uh, I was going to school for the first year, second year, the carpentry, and then I just started, or my teachers told me that I've opened up, uh, in the area, so I applied for it, and I'm doing a co-op program so I can go in the morning before school, instead of going to tech school, and I, um, go to work, and I paid and all. And, um, I'm working at a, a building in, or, or more, uh, by this Bourbon Square. And it's a big apartment complex, and we're just doing, but, uh, a pretty fun job, learning a lot, actually, so it's a really good opportunity for me.
It sounds like it's a great opportunity, and I'm so excited to hear that it's something that you are enjoying. And that you feel like, that you feel like you're really learning, learning a lot from it.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun, um, learning how to do everything that you need to do to build a huge apartment complex, or at least in, in the carpentry line of things. But, yes, it's awesome.
Aiden, do you see this as something that, like, a career that you could see yourself going into? Or are you looking, like, how did you get into this? Is it an interest that you have or just something you kind of fell upon?
Yeah, I was always interested. My dad was, is a carpenter, and a lot of people in my family are carpenters or at least involved in construction. I was always interested in it, so I was always helping around the house and on jobs he was on and stuff. So I kind of just grew an interest for, uh, working for my uncles and hand over to some owners and stuff, so I just kind of, so there's a class I could take for the tech school, and I took it. So now, that's what I'm doing. And yeah, I do see it as a good career choice because I don't see a lot of people going to trade right now. So there's a lot of opening, a lot of jobs going on, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, careers in the trades are fantastic opportunities for, opportunities for people. I'm, I'm excited to hear that you see that potential that's there and will, and will take advantage of it.
Yeah, it's, thank you.
Great. Great. Well, thank you for being here with us this, with us this evening, so that we can learn a little bit more about the opportunities that the tech school offers the students in, in our township. I'll, I'll be checking out when I, the next project I have going on here at the house. I'll be looking to, looking to see where, where you're, where you're working, Aiden. Were we able to get Tommy straightened out for, or Tommy's video or audio? You want to give it another try?
Tommy, you just have to unmute.
Maybe, before you start.
I can fill you in, Dr. Rishi.
Let's keep our board members on the screen so you can see them and they can see you, and the rest of us are going to, are going to just turn our cameras off and see if that's a little bit of a help. Our board will stay on, but the rest of us will turn our cameras off. See if that makes a difference now, Tommy. Yeah, it's better than it was before. Thank you for.
I'm not hearing anything. I can fill you in, Dr. Rishi. Tommy's working at, uh, Quest Tire, an automotive on West Chester Pike. It's, uh, he had a co-op opportunity where they, they hired him, and he works like Aiden, so he's there almost every day, and then he works on Saturdays too. Um, and we, I spoke with him this week, and he is just getting a tremendous experience there, and from what I hear, he's doing very well. And it's something that, uh, he's looking to, uh, continue next year.
That's terrific, Mr. Dunninge. I'm glad that, I'm glad, Tommy, that you were able to have that conversation with, with Mr. Dunninge. It sounds like you, similar to Aiden, have found something that you enjoy doing, and the fact that it can be part of your school day, that, that's pretty neat.
And they both get paid.
Even better, right?
Yeah, that was going to be my question. I want to congratulate both you boys on the opportunity to take this, to go to this technical school. I've been there. I've been in the shop where there's car after car, after tire, after transmission. I didn't understand any of it, but it was wonderful to see and see all of the kids working on it. Same thing with the construction. I had no idea I was going to see a real building. Aiden, I believe you might be a lion. Am I right? Are you a Lynnwood kid?
Yeah.
So it's good to see you, buddy. But I was very, very impressed going in there and seeing actual walls, putting insulation in, doing windows. I was actually doing a bathroom right then, and I had a couple of young kids explain to me what the tile looked like, what this like. It's just an amazing opportunity for you two boys and for all of us in Haverford to go out there and learn the trades. They even now are having a welding center, which is as big as our gym. And I don't know if you guys have seen it, but it's really something to behold. So while you can also be a PT, while you can also go to a hospital and have some medical experience, you can also be a carpenter. You can also do what Tommy's doing. It, it's just an opportunity for all of us in Haverford. And I congratulate you two guys on jobs well done. Good for you. Thank you. Good luck, Aiden. Roar, buddy.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Minji. And Tommy and Aiden, thank both of you for being such great representatives of our school district out in the community. You're not just within Haverford Township, but you are throughout the county. And because of the program that you are involved in, people know that you're not only associated with the technical school, but that you come from Haverford Township. So we are so appreciative of the wonderful reputation that you are developing for our district as you work in these businesses, and they get to think of you as someone who is from, from Haverstown. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our student reports. We have Zoe Starr from the middle school and Erica Borby from the high school. Zoe, you want to get started?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Zoe Starr, and I help out with the morning announcements at the middle school. I want to thank the board for allowing me to present tonight. A lot is happening at Haverford Middle School this week. We are at the midpoint of our third marking period. We are having conferences. Spring sports have begun. We are celebrating Women's History Month and World Down Syndrome Day on March 21st. But I think the biggest thing is the milder weather we've been having. Although we all love school, we are looking forward to spring break. I hope you all this, take this time to relax, and if we end up going outside, make sure you wear a mask. Um, that's about all I have right now. It's kind of a short announcements, but, um, I would just like to say, uh, thank you for the board to allow me to present.
Thank you, Zoe. Erica?
Good evening, staff, community, and members of the board. My name is Erica Borby, and I am thrilled to be here tonight. As spring break approaches, Haverford students are as dedicated as ever. Presented with long sunny days last week, I was reminded of our amazing athletic community as our spring sports teams spent time practicing outside and taking advantage of the early signs of good weather. Various teams were visited by Mr. Dunninge and Ms. Robinsonson, and it was touching seeing athletes interacting with administrators while in their element. The winter sports season has technically come to an end, but our talented Fords are still competing in the big leagues. Our JV and varsity cheerleaders finished second in the Central League last Saturday, and will be competing in the district championship this Saturday. Haverford Swim and Dive will also be sending state qualifier Katia Yuroslenova to the championship meet this Saturday at Mechanicsburg. Each week, graduation draws closer, and our senior planning committee has been meeting regularly to ensure the class of 2021 has a memorable senior year. On March 22nd and 23rd, seniors will have the opportunity to take pictures in their cap and gowns, holding a diploma. After, seniors will be given a graduation lawn sign to show off in their respective neighborhoods. Senior prom is set for June 4th at the Reserve, and senior officers are hard at work finalizing all the necessary plans. The class of 2021 is also celebrating this special year through a time capsule, and seniors are welcome to drop off any memorable items in the main office. I look forward to reuniting with my classmates in the future and reminiscing back on one of the most eventful years of our lives. The class of 2024 is holding elections for class officer positions, and all interested students are invited to submit a one-minute video highlighting their qualifications for the position. This is certainly a unique year to be a freshman in high school, and I wish the class of 2024 good luck in picking strong, dependent leaders. Yesterday, our best buddies' students marched outside in celebration of St. Patrick's Day. While it was unfortunate that our students did not have the opportunity to march in the city like previous years, there was no shortage of green gear on the track during fourth block. Today, Haverford hosted Sun Valley and Springfield High Schools in the gym for the annual Baji Championship Games. Congratulations to all the athletes that participated. Young Democrats and future Republicans are collaborating to host our yearly voter registration drive. There was a meeting with senior leaders on Tuesday, March 16th. While there will be some adjustments to this year's drive, club leaders are still dedicated to helping seniors voice their vote and aim to register at least 85% of eligible seniors. It is evident that students are growing more comfortable as the days go by. Our classes are growing each week. Zoom is significantly easier to navigate, and clubs are reuniting virtually, whether that's to take yearbook pictures, plan for the future, or brainstorm club activities. Every day is definitely a good day to be a Ford. Thank you so much for having me here tonight, and I look forward to my next evening with the board.
Thank you, Erica, and thank you, Zoe. It's great to hear all the good things that are happening. So, thanks for being with us this evening. Our next agenda item is public comment, and, uh, as folks will see, we're shifting gears a bit, uh, tonight. So, Anna, you want to help us out?
Uh, yes, Mr. Feinberg. Tonight, we have two people that signed up for a public comment. So we're going just to move them from the waiting room into the panelists. So, um, I have a timer for three minutes, and when our guests come in, if they can state their name and address before they start to speak, that would be great. I'm going to do our first one. Ms. Pasternak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Hi, thank you. Thank you for, uh, for allowing me this opportunity. I will be brief. Um, dear board members and Dr. Rishi, over the last several months, many parents, including myself, have been questioning you and asking for information regarding what is being brought in through the basis program. Not once did any of these inquiries state that we are against the basis program. Yet you and special interest groups continue to paraphrase us as opponents of your efforts. To be clear, we are asking for transparency, real inclusive representation for everyone. And to reiterate, I am for diversity, inclusion, and equality. Stern law has Down Syndrome, so I am for inclusivity. What does concern us is the potential for this program to include in an unsubstantiated and extreme politicized view that America and our school district is overwhelmingly racist and bad. Your lack of transparency only worsens these concerns, especially when board members smirk, shrug, and roll their eyes as constituents' letters are read. Yes, this conduct, conduct is not only unprofessional for an elected official. It also portrays a morally superior, mightier-than-thou condescension. Are you still wondering why you don't have buy-in from everyone? Ultimately, we understand the good you are trying to do. I do believe you're trying to do good, but unfortunately, there are bad people in the world, and the world isn't always a just place. Sadly, there are racist people in the world. You want to prepare kids to be well-rounded global citizens and succeed in a diverse workforce. We do too. Focus on education and acceptable behavior. When you try to peel back the layers to a person's deep-lined beliefs and upbringing, you stand across the line between educating and parenting. For those few bad parents out there, you will never counter what they teach their kids. For them accountability, for the accountability for unacceptable behavior is the lesson you must teach. This is what they will face in the real world. Ultimately, managers will deal with their performance and conduct rather than their beliefs and underlying attitudes. For those good parents out there, it will help if you offer transparency and representation for all. Unless, of course, you think we are all overwhelmingly bad, racist, or in need of parenting ourselves and have nothing to offer. Opening up your equity team for all would be a really good start. You can't just paint, you can't just paint us all with the institutional brush. Unfortunately, you did exactly that when you adopted the anti-racist resolution last summer without zero input, with zero input or debate from other parties. I would appreciate if you will come up with some data and specifics to show this or expect the questions to continue. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pasternak. Were you able to read your address? I, I.
I'm sorry. 609 Alexis Pasternak, Pasternak, 609 Woodland Drive in Haverstown.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, just to mention, Mr. Feinberg, I have a timer for three minutes so people can be alerted when they're ending, when the time comes up.
Thank you.
Ms. Conroy Smith, if you could read your name and address, that would be great. Oh, you're unmuted.
I'm sorry about that. My name is Helene Conroy Smith. I live at 32 East Westwood Park Drive, Haver Town. Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the 218 meeting where the district spoke of taking data to have available to the board regarding the number of students who will be in classrooms upon return. This data should have been completed, and at this time, it's really unfair to the community that we do not have all schools open now. Tonight's lag in removal of sound and video is another example of how our kids are having issues with Zoom. We need our kids educated, and we need all of our schools open now. This is an education. Rather than focus on equity and basis, we need to ensure we're focused on our students. The district needs to update its policies to give parents access to be exempt from religious indoctrination of the social justice curriculum. Parents need access to all curricula. We didn't say we didn't want basis. We asked for all curricula to be posted online. Daily, parents and taxpayers need to have access to curricula and any contract that's signed by the school district of Haverford Township publicized, because we, as parents, as taxpayers, have the right to access this information. We have concerns of readings in elementary school classrooms that are not developmentally age-appropriate. They share messages of death, gloom, and increased fear and are alarming, especially during a pandemic. Enough with the statement, "We've made mistakes." All curricula needs to be easily available and accessible to all parents. Parents who are seeing values that are not appropriately being instilled in your children in Haverford schools, please contact me, heleneconroy@yahoo.com. We are not accepting political agendas ever to be part of a child's education. The 218 board presentation alluded that AP courses are positively improving the school at Haverford, and we are seeing an increase to access to AP classes by increasing the number of AP classes and opening AP classes to all students. This started approximately five to six years ago. I ask for us, for the district, to talk about the advantages to having these AP courses. For new parents that are not familiar with this, share the information on how many scores of three or above were given, were, I'm sorry, were achieved, and talk about the notoriety to our high school. What is the financial impact of more AP classes? I am proud to have AP classes for choices for our students. Has Haverford increased choices for kids with disabilities? Have we seen an increase? And I'm not talking about extra resource room classes that are pass fail. I'm talking about actual classes that are going to improve upon their equality. In high school, a variety of discussions are occurring in the classroom. I ask for these discussions inclusive of others' perspective. The new survey sent to students on Friday, 3/12, apparently requested more information on concerns about treatment in the classroom. The Student Equity Committee asked for this information as stated by an administrator on 3/13. Where is the data? Where is the data? We are asking you to be transparent and inclusive of parents' rights. When the girls' track team was pushed and bullied out of the weight room by a volunteer football trainer for two weeks in the 2019-2020 school year, was that inclusive or equitable? The district needs to share the number of harassment complaints filed by parents and students, and the district needs to share the number of complaint logs parents have called and spoken with administrators that didn't make it to those report sheets. Dr. Roushi stated that the Basis and Belonging Program was created for one child to feel welcome, and I feel it disheartening and disingenuous that my daughters tried to belong and to learn how to read. Haverford didn't support my girls becoming fluent in reading on their grade levels. Is that equitable? Is it equitable students need to leave the Haverford School District to learn to read, or parents need to pay for expensive tutors and programs to help their child read? What I'm saying right now is we're submitting to Basis and Belonging, and we're looking at part of it as a microcosm to hide behind many pieces of political agenda. We have an equity committee that's not transparent, and data on the surveys have not been shared with parents. At many times, equally, at any time, equality, diversity, and inclusion are used in today's climate. It's political and Marxism. I believe we need to reframe the system in place and have full transparency. A multicultural curriculum that includes all people is most appropriate for our tax dollars. Segregated groupings is not a collective community. All curricula just needs to be posted. My taxpaying dollars are paying for education, and I expect my children to be educated, not indoctrinated. Also, I'd like to add that the senior prom not being available to have other dates is not appropriate.
Ms. Conroy Smith?
Yeah.
It's actually been about four and a half minutes, so.
Okay, I'll stop there then.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening.
Next item on our agenda is superintendent's remarks. Dr. Roushi?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. First up, I want to just comment publicly and thank our elementary parents or parents of elementary students who have answered our call to become lunch monitors in the district. Several weeks ago, we talked about the need for lunch monitors at each and every one of the elementary buildings. And you will see on tonight's agenda, we are asking you to approve a number of people who have, you know, do have the opportunity within their life to step forward and support us in this way. We certainly recognize that there are also probably many, many parents out there who would love to be able to help us out, but just aren't able to at this point in time. So we want to thank them as well. But we look forward to bringing a few more people on to help with the lunch monitoring as our elementary students return to us on Monday, the 22nd. We are preparing a communication within the district out of Ms. Christensen's office to inform parents about PSSA. I won't go into a lot of detail tonight other than to say that my, the most important message for me in communicating tonight is the concept of choice. The people who perceive that the district has a choice about PSSAs, the only choice that any public school district has at this point in time is when, not if. So it's when the PSSAs will be administered for this year. And you have a choice to administer them this year or to administer them in September. It's not one, you know, and if we administer them in September, we would still be administering standardized tests in the spring of the next school year as well. So as a district, we have chosen that we are going to administer them before the close of this school year. Timelines, a lot of detailed information will be coming from Ms. Christensen's office. But I just wanted to clarify some of the perhaps misunderstanding, misconception that's out there that we could have chosen not to administer PSSAs at all. And that's not, not an accurate assumption. Joining us this evening, I also want to bring attention to Mr. Jim Blumenstock, who is here as a representative of the Haverford Township Education Foundation. And we've asked Jim to be present this evening because later on in your agenda tonight, you are going to be asked to approve a donation of $44,000 that the Ed Foundation is making to support the families across our school district, to support them with food, to support them with clothing, to support them in many ways that will enable their children to remain active and engaged in the school system to enable them to remain as a family, taking care of one another. It's such a remarkable donation, and I know Jim is here with us tonight. So, Mr. Feinberg, I'll turn it briefly over to you, as I'm sure the board will want to thank Jim on behalf of the foundation.
Thanks, Dr. Roushi. And I just want to mention, I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Blumenstock since our kids were in preschool together. And pointing out that in addition to his work with the foundation as a volunteer, he's also active and has served, I believe, as president of the board at the Haver Town Y. So Jim, thanks for all your good work. And if you want to take a couple of minutes and just talk about the foundation's gift, that'd be great.
Sure. Thank you, Larry, and thank you, Dr. Roushi. And I just want to say hello to the board members as well as other staff that are on the call tonight. This is a great opportunity. Thank you for inviting us in tonight. My name is Jim Blumenstock. As was announced, I am a board member of the Haverford School District Education Foundation. I've been on the board for about 12 years now. And back in April, when, you know, we were witnessing the beginnings of the fallout of COVID and the shutdowns, I sat down with a small group of our board members, and we tried to figure out how we could contribute in some way to help alleviate some of the some of the distress coming to our school district families from the COVID fallout. So we benchmarked with some other foundations around the state, got some great information, and we decided with the power of our reach in the community as well as our great donor base, we could perhaps begin to raise some funds to work with the district to assist, providing assistance, if you will, in the form of originally grocery store gift cards and school supply gift cards to help our students, you know, continue with their education without the stress of, you know, the challenges of COVID. So we initially had an appeal to our donor base back in April, and we took that appeal all the way through October and raised about just short of $20,000 in that first appeal. We started to work with the district, Dr. Roushi, and our two great social workers, Jocelyn Druces and Kathleen McAndrews, and understood, you know, what they were facing, what they were hearing, what they were seeing as needs within the school district family network. And so we began to purchase gift cards from grocery stores as well as school supply businesses. And we continued our search for more funds. So we started a second appeal in the fall, and we raised another, as of today, another $30,000. So as of just the last week or so, we've passed the $50,000 mark, which is all inspiring to see that kind of response from our community. So we continue to work with now the business office, Dr. Roushi, Nicole Bagstelli, and the social workers to continue to kind of fine-tune the process and keep understanding, you know, more needs that are out there within the family network. And we just continue to try to find ways to help. And I think it's a great example of an organization in the community pivoting from its sort of base mission and finding other ways to respond. And the needs are great, and as you all know by watching the news and reading the paper, things just continue to stress families out through COVID. And we wanted to find a way to help. And so that's what we're doing. We're collaborating, we're responding. And to just sum it up, the response from the community has just been just all inspiring. And we couldn't even have dreamed of raising $50,000 when we first started, but here we are. And I think, you know, it's going to help our students come back into the classroom, not have to worry about the home front, and be able to learn with some peace and ease on their minds. So thank you for the invite. Thanks for working together with us. And, you know, we hope to keep finding new ways to respond to the needs in the district.
Jim, we can't thank you enough. Please thank your foundation board members and certainly your donors and to the community at large. Thank you very much for responding to this. You know, it's, Haver Town's a great place to live, and this is a real solid example of that. So thanks a lot, Jim.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You as well. Mr. Feinberg, my final information item pertains to the modification of our hybrid schedule and returning students at the secondary level. But prior to that, I would like to just make some brief remarks, if I may.
Thanks.
Our district stands with our Asian-American staff, students, and families, and is dedicated to providing a school environment that is supportive, inclusive, and safe for all. We remain steadfast in our commitment to the work around equity, dignity, respect, and appreciation for each person in our schools and in the greater community. We are saddened and disappointed by the increasingly violent attacks targeting Asian-Americans, and we are sensitive to the concerns that such attacks raise for our students, their families, and our employees. This district announces bias, violence, and hate crimes directed toward any individual or any group. We encourage our students and our staff members to reach out to our counselors. They have the ability to support our school community. We always rely upon them for this support, and this time is no different from any other. Thank you. Thanks, Anna. As I mentioned, Mr. Feinberg, my final information item this evening pertains to an examination of our instructional model at the secondary level and a recommendation that we'll be making tonight, that we our hybrid model for our middle and high school students. So this evening, what we're going to be taking a look at on our agenda is an update on some of the metrics and the guidelines that are out there. I've got terrific news in terms of a vaccination update. We talk about the preparation that our principals and our teachers and central office staff have undertaken. And then finally, we will conclude with a recommendation that will be, for which we'll be seeking your approval this evening. As we did with the elementary schools, we are providing information on the area districts and how, when their planned return to in-person learning. And at each of the districts, it can be, it will look a little different as it does for us. So we're just identifying on here the dates, and you can see the date started as early as today with Springfield having all of their secondary students returning and takes us up to April 12th, when Garnet Valley and Wallingford will have all of their secondary students in-house at that point in time. We're looking at our data. What is presented on here identifies our four-week trend for the county. All right, remember, when we looked at this before, we look at the county, we look locally, and then we look at our district. So for the county, we have what our health professionals would say to us, stabilizing data. So we're not seeing any huge spike that then is sustained for a period of time, but we are seeing very minor modifications in those data over the last, what's presented on here for the four-week period of time. As we move on and look at the information for Haverford Township, do I wish that these numbers were a little different? Yes, I do. I wish that we were not seeing an increase in most recent data when you look over the four-week period of time. I'll remind people, these data come to us from Chester County. Week one references the most current week. What you are seeing on the screen right now are data from, that was provided on Friday, March 12th. Friday is when we receive it. So week one would have been the week leading up to March 12th. Tomorrow, we will have data indicative of, you know, it was published on March 19th, and it will be the average of all of the daily counts for that information. We are around where we were five weeks ago. But if you look five weeks ago to today, that, you know, that those data seemed to fall, you know, over time. So we will hope to, you know, continue to see a downwards trend as we, you know, as we move forward. We would not make any rash or harsh decisions. We would not make any rash or harsh decisions based on one week. We would be looking to see what the pattern appears to look like over, over a several week period of time. As we move though and look locally, as we had mentioned, when we were talking about elementary, all of our professionals, be they from CHOP, University of Pennsylvania, even working with Chester County Health Department, focus upon in-school transmission. Not only are we still not seeing in-school transmission, but we're, you know, knock wood, almost afraid to say, last week, we experienced our first week in the school district of Haverford Township since the school year started, where we did not have one positive case in our district. What that means is we did not have any one individual contagious in that, in the bill, in the building during their contagious period. This week, we have one so far, you know, as of eight, whatever the time is, on March 18th. We have one occurrence. So we are hoping that, you know, our data will continue. If you look at the week of February 28th, which took us into the beginning of March, that was another good week. It was actually a significantly good week for us by comparison, you know, with the entire total for the month of February. So we're hoping that we will, you know, continue along with those trends. I mentioned that I had some really great news about vaccines. I even have an update to what is on this screen tonight. We had, since our last meeting, there has been a significant effort on the part of the state and at each county to have educators and anyone working within our school systems vaccinated. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit was the site for anyone working within our district or any of the other 14 districts within Delaware County. We surveyed all of our staff to ascertain their level of interest in the vaccine. From that, we provided that information to Pennsylvania Department of Education, who then in turn broke everything down and sent that to the IU. Last week, folks in our tech office, Rob Anderson, Sarah Christensen, Greg Parker in HR, worked, you know, looking at those lists, communicating with people, making sure that we had right email addresses, phone numbers for contact information. And then a message went out and we were at that point in time allocated 346 vaccines. So we sent information to 346 of our staff members. Through that round one, every employee who comes into contact with children in any of our five elementary buildings and our middle school were included in round one, which means that by March 19th, the end of the day tomorrow, those individuals will have received the J and J vaccine. We had fewer than 100 employees who were left to be included in what will be identified as round two, which originally we were told would not be initiated until the end of March or maybe sometime in the beginning of April. I'm very excited to tell you this evening that folks who are in round two have already received their invitation to register for the vaccine this weekend. I can say to you confidently that any teacher or instructional assistant, those people who are with children on a regular basis from K to 12, who is interested in that vaccine, in that vaccine will be vaccinated before spring break. That it's remarkable. The feedback that I have received from our staff members who have gone out to the intermediate unit could not be any more complimentary about the level of organization, the professionalism which, with, with which they were treated and, and even just the nice greeting and the personable staff that they met at the intermediate unit and how efficient everything was. So we know that those folks, you know, will have, have that access. Anyone who wants it will have, you know, be able to be vaccinated and we couldn't be more excited about that. So we're looking now at, again, asking you this evening to mod, to approve a modification to our hybrid learning plan at the secondary level. We've looked at the guidance. We know the additional mitigation that, that's needed. And we're really focused on the social and emotional wellbeing of our students and getting our students back. The social interaction that they thrive upon is so very important and we're looking to, you know, to create that. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Saxa who will once again talk with us about what planning has been taking place, how our principals have, you know, what they're doing to prepare for this return, the survey results from talking with, that we've asked our parents at the secondary level and then clarifying what our recommendation is. Jen?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ruchi. Anna, you can actually move to the next slide. Oh, you're already there. Never mind. This is good. Key points. So as Dr. Ruchi mentioned, our building principals and their teams led meetings with our parents and guardians to review some really important information about what the shift would entail, some logistical and other important information. And you can see some of the key points that they shared listed here on this slide. First and foremost, they really expressed their sincere appreciation for the students, for their parents and guardians, for the teachers, for all of the staff and everything that they've done to really keep the students engaged in meaningful learning throughout this school year, despite the, the various challenges that were presented. They also reviewed what will stay the same and what will be different and a minor changes that were necessary. They reviewed the attendance policy, just reminding parents and guardians that students who are signed up for in-person school are expected to be present in the building every day. When students are quarantined or if they are in isolation, then they will be able to access their classes via Zoom. So those who are signed up for in-person, we would like to see them every day in person. In addition to sharing a timeline at these meetings for making a decision, the principals also continue to encourage families that can provide transportation to and from school. If they could continue to do so, that will alleviate some pressures on our buses and, and help us to make that setting as safe as possible as well. So our health and safety plan will remain the same. We will continue to mask and sanitize and of course, ask for folks to self-screen at home prior to coming to school. For those students who are remaining in person, their teacher and their class will remain the same in almost all of the cases. Those who transition between online and in-person will also keep their same teacher and their still classes and their classes because they'll start attending through Zoom now. There is one exception. We do have some middle school students who have been in the Haverford online only classes from the very beginning of school. So if they have decided to return to in-person learning, then their schedule will shift because their teachers remain as Haverford online only teachers. So they would be shifting into the classes that are currently taking place as they return to in-person learning. The length of the school day will remain the same. Students will attend in-person for the morning and attend virtually in the afternoon. It is important to note that the quarantine guidelines will still require anyone who is within six feet of a COVID positive or presumed positive person for 15 minutes or more during the infectious period will need to be quarantined. This doesn't mean that a whole class would be quarantined, only the, that we're in that, only those that were in closer proximity as I just described. Some of the differences that we're, we might see during in-person learning include a possible change of the classroom for groups that were, are going to be too large because they have so many students returning. So they may have to move to a, just a bigger space within the building. We also have a potential change to the days that the middle school band orchestra and choral students actually travel to the high school just to be able to maintain, you know, with those groups, maintain the, the correct amount of distance and make sure that we're providing the space for those. So there will be communication if that day needs to change, that will come directly from the middle school. And I'll just say, i- in general, there does need to be an adjustment period for both our students as well as our staff as the students return to the building as, as one large group, which is really the first time they've done that this year. Teachers right now are contemplating how to welcome students, acknowledging that some may be feeling more nervous, some may be feeling more excited. We recognize that we will need to spend some time in the classroom, just building a new community, getting to know new routines, getting to know each other. So it, it will of course, continue our academics, but we really want to prioritize this community building, checking in with everybody, making sure that, that we're all feeling okay and really open to learning. We do thank all of you who were able to return the instructional model selection form. Principals and their teams are still reaching out to a few families, but what you see here is a reflection of what we know so far about just in general, how many folks are staying, are remaining within their current programming or making a shift. So at the middle school, the vast majority of those who are currently hybrid will remain in-person with about a third of those who are virtual joining them in the buildings. 64% of those who are virtual will remain so for the rest of the year. At the high school, again, the vast majority of those who are currently in-person will remain so with about 5% of those folks shifting over to the virtual offer. About 70% of our virtual students will remain virtual and about 30% will move to an in-person class. And while we start the process with waiting lists, in some cases, both the high school and the middle school do feel confident that they will be able to accommodate all the requests that are made for shifts. And they will be notifying families in the coming weeks, week and a half, two weeks about, you know, what those placements might be and what the timing is for those shifts. And now I'm able to turn it back over to Dr. Ruchi for the recommendations and next steps.
Thanks, Ms. Saxa. So given what we have shared with you this evening, our recommendation this evening is that we're going to propose a return to five days, that that's, that's the modification to the hybrid. That, I mean, essentially we would be eliminating the cohorts, cohort A and cohort B with, you know, with students coming on certain days. That in-person learning would occur five days a week, but we would maintain the hybrid in terms of in-person in the morning and virtual in the afternoon. And as a reminder and point of clarification, that is due to still maintaining six feet of social distancing when students would be eating lunch. And given the size of 1,900 students in the high school, 1,600 students in the middle school, even if you were to start breaking them down, the numbers of lunches that you would need, the numbers of lunch periods that you would need to have in order to maintain six feet of distancing as students were eating, make it next to impossible to schedule and then also to provide the adequate and appropriate supervision that would be necessary. So we're proposing that the five-day be the morning, having everyone in person. And then on, similar to what we have done for the elementary buildings, Friday, March 29th, that afternoon would be for classroom preparation and asynchronous learning for all students involved. So if there are any questions, we'll take questions. Bridgette?
Hi, thank you. I just want to clarify that you said Friday, the 29th. I think Friday is the 26th. So just to confirm it's the Friday, the 26th.
Oh, Friday, the 20th, if that's, yep.
The 29th is my birthday. I was like, it's not a Friday this year.
Break. Bridgette knew that. By that, we send that, send that information out tomorrow. Thank you.
And, and then just a couple of other comments. I agree that the, the vaccination report for the access for our staff has been great. I was on a, one of the statewide calls today and a sentiment was made like, of course, give it to the educators. They'll find a way to get it done, get it delivered. Like, it seems like we should have been looking at the DCIUs or the IUs as distribution points maybe all along. And some of the frustrations of people getting vaccines could have been alleviated because it sounds like the IUs are doing a great job. And just on the, on the COVID data that you presented, I just wanted to have an opportunity. The data was focused on the incidence rate, the cases and the incidence per 100,000, which if people are following some of the, the guidelines, the, anytime that the count is over 100 per 100,000, that's still in the substantial spread. But the data that wasn't included in this presentation is with the positivity rate and the last four-week average has been 6%, which is well below the 10% substantial spread. So if people look at both data points, there's more comfort in our community incidence of COVID that allows us to be at one of kind of the lower kind of thresholds that puts us in a category where the in-person learning is, is feasible. And I just also wanted to, kind of looking back over the, the trends of that data, our COVID incidence is similar to where we were at the beginning of November. So before all of the spikes of the holiday season and as some of the data in the presentations have shown, like, we were able as a district to safely remain in-person in the hybrid format for November, December, January, February, when the rates were higher. So that I know gives me some additional comfort about where we are as a community and where our schools are in terms of their mitigation of the virus transmission in our buildings. And, and so just thought that was important to add some context. If people are just looking at that one number, that's not quite the whole picture of, of what the COVID situation is in our local area.
Thanks, Bridgette.
Thanks, Bridgette. Laura?
That is amazing news about the vaccine. Thank you for sharing that. That's really thrilling. I'm so glad to hear that. A question about the return date of April 6th. So that's following a week plus a day of vacation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess my only concern about that date, I, we're sort of balancing two things. We want to get the kids back in school as much as possible, as quickly as possible. But also recognizing that a lot of families are going to travel. And, you know, it's Easter weekend, I think that weekend. So, you know, people might be getting together or something like that. I guess I'm just having, I'm having a hard time sort of balancing those two aspects. Is that, do you understand what I'm saying? Is it, can you, can you speak about that just a little bit? Because I'm sure you've thought this, thought about this a lot.
And, and we, you know, have had those same concerns as well, you know, and, and what, so what, you know, what date do you, do you choose? And we are really relying upon the fact that our families have done a remarkable job. I mean, you know, we can stand here and proudly say we've not had in-school transmission, but that's largely due to the way that our families have approached this in terms of keeping children home when they're, you know, when they're not feeling well, if they are symptomatic. So our belief is, you know, for all the months since the school year opened, that has been the way in which our families have operated and that they would continue to do so. You know, and so it shouldn't be a reason that we would prolong the return for, for others. But I mean, that's, there's no science behind it. There, there's no recommendation from any group. That's just our, you know, feeling based on experience.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my other question was related to, it's more just a point of clarification. So, so some students who are currently hybrid are going to be able to go virtual, but basically just zoom into their current class. Is that right? And then some are going to transition fully to Haverford online?
Yeah. Thank you for asking. They, they will.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay. Right there. We ended up with sort of two models at the middle school, which is sort of appropriate because they have a little bit of the elementary model and a little bit of the high school model. So any students who are now transitioning, who have been doing hybrid and do not want to have any in-person time now will be moving to zooming into their current classes. Those Haverford online classes will remain sort of with the kids they've started with in the year. A couple of them are coming out. But, but they will not get any new students in those classrooms.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful. And parents, parents are clear what they signed up for?
So we have, and Mr. Haran and, and the team over there have been really careful. They just recently sent just a notice saying like, this is what we understand. This is what you have. This is what we, you know, just confirming this is what you're saying. Because yeah, I mean, listen, the, the whole year has been.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Right.
Right. Okay, wonderful. Good. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. This is, I know this is a heavy lift, so I'm glad we're able to get this done as quickly as possible. So thanks.
Thanks, Laura. Dave?
It's a lot. One thing I was going to say, we've mentioned already by Bridget, I know some people may have been concerned by that, by the uptick cases in Havreford, but I think the important number to look at there is, as you pointed out, one case in schools and that's not transmission. That is just total positive tests. I mean, that's, that's a huge, that's not a huge number. It's, it's a small number, which is huge news. So I mean, that's, I, I think the, the important thing to look at. I just have one quick question to clarify. Um, you said the vaccine news also is fantastic. You said less than a hundred teachers who, who want the vaccine remain. There's, there's not a large number of teachers who don't want the vaccine, correct? I mean, it's pretty, from whatever we recall, it's a pretty small number who don't want the vaccine. Is that?
Well, actually, Mr. Schwartz, if I could first state, one hundred of our over nine hundred employees.
Right.
So it's not that, that group, that is not teacher, many teachers in that one hundred group because we had to prioritize the people who have regular and consistent contact with students. So the majority of that one hundred would be maybe all the Oakmont building, everyone who works at Oakmont, any of our custodians who are nighttime custodians, like, that's the majority and some high school staff who may not have made it into that, that first grouping. We, we did not say to people, like, people have not said to us, I do not want the vaccine. People have said they're, you know, they, maybe they've already gotten one shot elsewhere or they're fully vaccinated elsewhere. You know, they're just telling us that they're not going to partake in this particular program.
Okay, but that percentage, I mean, I assume that the, the percentage is fairly small of those who don't, who are saying, no, thank you for the vaccine. Is that, is that number fairly small? I mean, I, I'm just wondering for, for her immunity or for us to achieve her immunity amongst staff, you need about eighty percent or so people, I believe, to be vaccinated. Are we approaching that as far as?
Well, Mr. Schwartz, we have not asked people to indicate whether they are electing not to get the vaccine at all. We've not asked that. We're not asking our employees to share that information with us.
Okay, I assume this, I assume we can't, okay, I was curious if we're asking, but okay, but I mean, still, it's very, very good news.
Many have volunteered by, you know, saying, I'm not participating, but here's why, you know, I want the vaccine.
Okay, that's how it's working. I just, I was reading today about how, um, one of the big upcoming problems is for like airlines and other hotels and such to verify whether or not folks have gotten the vaccine. There's different, I mean, Europe's dealing with it right now and they're wondering the different ways that they can verify that. It's difficult for us to do because it's an employee type of a situation and there are certain rules I understand. I just wanted to know if there's, what you said, I think, makes a lot of sense. So if, if they're saying, no, thank you, most of them are providing a reason why. So that's, that's, that's encouraging. So thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Antoinette?
Thanks. Yeah, the, the first thing I just wanted to say was a really big thank you for putting all of this together. You know, we understand that this, this, there's a lot of work that goes into this, you know, it's not just a slide presentation, right? And so I just, I really do want to say thank you. I think I, you know, Ms. Sax has talked about it a lot, but it is, it is really important for the students and their social and emotional wellbeing for, for further in-school learning. So, you know, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And even though we just, you know, made the modification for alternate Fridays, I think it's really encouraging. And, and that just shows that behind the scenes that you all have just been working so hard to, to make sure that, that we're continuing to progress as much as we can. So, so thank you for, for that. The only question I had was about an update to the voluntary testing and how, how that has been going and if that's been expanded at all.
It has expanded somewhat, not as quickly as we would have anticipated that it would, or would have liked to have seen it expand. But what is happening now is there's a, a greater need for education on our part in that some people feel that once they are vaccinated, there's no need for them to participate in the, in the rapid antigen testing. So Nicole and I had a meeting with Mike Mullin and a representative group and we're going to get communication out across the district as to why it is still important that we have employees participate. So not a great uptick to, to report on now, but in, on some, we gained insight in when we did our little bit of investigating to find out why.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that update.
And if I could just tack on to that, is there any further thinking about testing of student groups on a kind of approach, I think, at different times, it might have been mentioned about athletes or different groups of students?
Yes, actually, some of our performing groups have already approached Mr. Donegey at the, at the high school that, you know, the possibility of having, whether it's a choral group or, you know, students in drama, you know, if they were to participate in testing, could they actually then put on some kind of a performance? So we're going to start, we're actually looking into it now for a possible start after spring break.
That's great. And yeah, another benefit of having the access to that kind of testing.
Any other questions from the board? Not seeing any. I just, I want to thank our administration and our principals for all the work that's gone into this and for all the work that's gone into the past year. So, thank you.
We appreciate your support as well.
Our next agenda item is a construction update. And this week, I believe, almost all of our board members had an opportunity to tour the new Linwood School with Ken Matthews. It's beautiful. It never ceases to amaze me how, you know, we, we start out with a, with a field and some sets of plans and somebody waves a magic wand and a year, year or two later, there it is. It's, it's just going to be a beautiful, a wonderful school. And I think I could speak for the board to just say how excited we are. So Ken, what do you have for us?
Sure. Thank you. I'll, I'll start with Linwood. Yes, it is very exciting. Now that they've started to finally clean the building, so you can really see, you know, the colors and the life that's there. I'll be excited to see the students there here before you know it. So as far as an update on Linwood, you know, we're really kind of getting down to it, wrapping most things up throughout the building. And then we're getting started with site work, which will proceed through the summer. And then the work's supposed to be completed in the middle of August in preparation of school starting after Labor Day. So from that standpoint, things are moving, continue to move along well. And the building itself should be wrapped up this spring. That being said, we also have a few change orders this evening, you know, our normal ones that we present. There is the cafeteria change order that's a little more significant that we had been discussed over the last few months. So this is for Steubner to do their work to get, which they've started a little bit of it already, but this is to, to get that little bit of expansion done. So just wanted to see if anybody had any questions.
Any questions from the board? Looks like we're good.
Okay, great. And then as far as the high school, you can see right behind me here, the structural steel. You know, it's amazing how quickly it's taken shape. We were able to kind of fight through the winter, get the foundations done. The steel is basically just about complete. Site work continues. They're delivering roofing in about a week. So you can really start to see the exterior take shape. And now that we're kind of out of the winter weather, our number one goal is to get the building enclosed as quickly as possible so we can start on the interior fit-out work and continue that. And it's hard to believe, but, you know, what you see behind us has to be complete in a little less than six months in August as well. So we continue to keep the throttle down on the contractors and, and push through completion. So things, again, continue to move along well on schedule. And then this evening, there are two, two minor change orders for the high school, typical items that we've come across for the project. So if there's any questions regarding that.
Any questions regarding the high school?
Just want to say a big thanks to Ken, his team and CB Development for taking such great care of us and our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. Next up, Jamie Slusinski from PFM Financial Advisors. Jamie, how are you this evening?
I'm well. How's, how are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Well, it's only, I guess it's nice to follow the construction process. I can see your high school doesn't have any exterior on it, so I'm going to get you somebody that puts an exterior on it. That's the goal. I, I don't know if, if someone can put up my presentation. I'll try to be relatively brief since I think you've, you know, heard me spiel about this a few times, but I can give an update to the public about what we're trying to accomplish. So just as a backdrop, you know, we've been working with the district for a number of years, but we've developed a financial plan for the various capital projects, starting with the Linwood Elementary School project, now in the high school, Chatham, and then Cooper Town Elementary School for their particular needs, which will happen over the next coming, next couple of years or so. So we've done much of the financings already. We did a large issuance a couple of years ago for over thirty million. Initially, we did about ten million. And the plan really was to kind of come back over the next couple of years to utilize a bank qualified status, which essentially provides the district some benefits for interest rates because of a tax status for the investors that'll pass along lower interest rates as well as a call provision of value. So this is really the next step in that process. We're looking to consider a close to a ten million dollar issuance that will go toward a few projects, which I'll go to in, in more detail in a few minutes. But if you want to scroll to the bottom of this page, I'll just give you a brief update on the market. So again, it seems to give them here every year, but I am here every year at this point. Overall, we've had some, you know, good interest rates over the last year or so. And, you know, obviously, we've talked about this in the past when we've done refinancings, you know, mostly due to the COVID impact and the economic conditions. You know, rates really hit the bottom, you know, about six months ago. They've started to creep up a little bit. You know, US Treasury rates are actually up today. We're up about ten basis points overall in, in the bond market. We saw a pretty big spike over the last, you know, couple of weeks, but it stabilized a little bit. So generally speaking, yeah, we're not at the all-time lows, but, you know, in, in the grand scheme of things, we're, we're in a good place. And, you know, when we were planning for these projects, the concept was really to take on like a dollar cost averaging concept. When you, when you invest, kind of go into the market at different times and hope you, you kind of maintain a, a strong interest rate. And I think we're going to, we're getting there, you know, when we have much of the debt, you know, at extremely low interest rates. And I think this will be, you know, within that range, assuming the board moves forward. You know, we'll, we'll keep under the budget that we felt we were going to come through initially. So you could turn to the next page. Just a snapshot of the debt of the, of the district, you know, every year, you continue to pay down principal. We're maintaining an annual payment of a little over eleven point five, eleven point seven million dollars when you take into account your state reimbursement. The total principal outstanding as of right now is just over a hundred and thirty-three million dollars, which is reasonable. I know it's a lot, but it's reasonable for a district of your size. Once we get kind of through these projects, we'll be somewhere around the hundred and fifty million dollar range, which again, in comparison to districts of your size, you know, falls within a good category. We're going to be talking to the rating agency Moody's in about a week. We're hopefully going to see where we fall with our positive outlook. Moody's has to do some things for them to kind of get through that process and from a regulatory purpose. And frankly, we're going to be coming back to them anyway, hopefully, for this particular transaction. So maybe we'll have some news on that. Turn to the next page. So, you know, not perfect dress schedule, but this is the dress schedule we've been working off of. I think you've been moving along at a good pace so far, based on what I just heard. You know, it looks like Linwood's is about getting pretty close to being done. I'm pretty, and now we're kind of working on the high school part. From a, you know, from a cash flow standpoint, as Bob alluded to at our finance committee last week, although you have money currently left over from the last bond issue, the way things are kind of being, you know, placed and utilized, you know, you'll run out of money in, you know, the next few months. So the concept here is going to add another, you know, nine or so million dollars for the next round to continue moving forward with the need you have for these projects. And then we'll probably come back about a year from now for the balance of this, once we kind of know all the final cost of the projects. You know, maybe there'll be a little less than we expected and we won't have to borrow as much. But again, from a cash flow standpoint, things are moving pretty well. So I think the big change for the conversation for tonight is really about what we're going to ask you to consider hopefully at your next meeting is the use of these funds. I think I've been talking mostly about your, your capital needs for these particular projects. But one thing that came up over the last few weeks is the district is considering doing some fleet upgrades of your buses. After talking to Bob, you know, previously, there's some concept of using either some cash or even leasing your buses. And again, this, at this point, it looks like about ten buses you're thinking about financing or utilizing. And my thought was, if we're going to potentially go out for, you know, to the capital markets and since there's a useful life of these, you know, these buses for, you know, a longer period of time, we can actually include this in the borrowing and given where the interest rate environment is, I think it's economically feasible to include it for this transaction. And we can maintain that overall ten million dollar issuance for that bank qualification. So you'll get a little bit of a cash flow relief by, you know, amortizing over ten years, locking in a rate somewhere in a one percent range. And we can also include the balance of that for, for these capital projects. The only downside to that is we'll, you know, we'll just have to include that million dollars we would have used for these set of projects in the next kind of set of next borrowing. But I, we obviously have enough room to cover that based on our cash flow model. So that's the thought process here. I think it makes a lot of sense. Frankly, the, the balance here is the timeline that you've seen from me a number of times. We're at a well-oiled machine at this point. We'll be working through, assuming the board wants to move forward with the preliminary official statement. We would officially be going to Moody's for a credit rating as possibly as, as early as, as of the next couple of weeks, even though we'll be talking about it anyway, next week, we would probably get a rating back probably by, you know, mid-April at this point. We'd ask you to consider next meeting, which would be April eighth, what we've done in the past, which is a parameters resolution, which we would establish those maximum interest rates, maximum borrowing amount, maximum maturity, and of course, establish what the purposes are. So assuming the board's comfortable with these multiple purposes, series A would be for the, you know, building projects and the series B would be for the, the buses. And we would, you know, structure it that way. Assuming we move forward in a reasonable fashion, we'd probably get to market and lock in interest rates through our competitive process, which we've been doing sometime in mid to end of April. And you'd have your money by kind of the end of May, maybe June, depending on if the market behaves. The beautiful part, of course, about these parameters resolutions is, you know, it gives us some flexibility to, you know, stop or slow down if we see that the market kind of is really going in the wrong direction and, you know, we can kind of plan and, and work towards jumping in when we, when we think it makes sense. So, you know, if we see a lot of supply or, you know, there's just a volatility in the market, you know, we'll have that flexibility to, to join the market at that time. But so far, you know, the transactions we've done have been well-received and have, you know, obviously gotten great interest rates. So we don't expect anything different here. So I'll stop answering any questions. I know George McDonald is on the phone. There's nothing, you know, legally that we're asking you to consider tonight. If you, you make a motion, you know, that's really the, the next steps. And then George and myself and the rest of our team would be working with administration to take it to the next level and come back at your next board meeting and ultimately get through the rating process and ultimately up pricing.
Great. Questions from the board? Bridget?
Just a quick question to help put it in context. I guess I hadn't thought of the total amount that we've borrowed. You've mentioned like a hundred and thirty million dollars, which I translate to also the size of our operating budget that we'll be looking at. It, just for kind of rule of thumb, I know in terms of people's individual household budgets, you know, there's kind of a thinking that you, you know, shouldn't pay more than three times your salary for a house. Is that applicable to school districts, like that the amount of debt we have is equal to our? Is that applicable to school districts like that? The amount of debt we have is equal to our annual operating budget? Is there any kind of range that we should be focused on?
Yeah. I mean, what the, what the rating agency looks at is kind of twofold. And that's always what I try to, you know, base it off of because that's the kind of the apples to apples comparison for, you know, people within your credit rating. So, you know, generally speaking, what they're looking at is, is, is debt service to, to, to revenues. That's kind of covered, you know, that's calculation number one. And then secondarily, they look at kind of overlapping debt. So it's a combination of the district's debt, associated, the associated township debt, and then even the county related debt for the amount of people that live in the township. So, you know, there's a good sized township here, good, strong wealth levels. So, you know, you're asking for an actual range. I'll get you the, what they're really looking at. You fall in the, the category of the double A mark. So you're, you're in the right category. You don't, and when we've been talking to Moody's, we've been upfront with them and here's the plan. They understand what's going to happen over the next couple of years. And there has been no pushback at all from their viewpoint of, of adding the, the amount of debt that we're talking about here, because there's been a strong enough level of, you know, revenues even during the middle of COVID as well. It's just kind of the global wealth of the township.
An important item is the fact that these projects, Linwood, the high school, the two elementary schools, the buses are roughly $62 million. So you're wrapping that debt service over top of older debt. That's going to eventually go away. So it, it, it eventually, if you, if you look on that schedule, it's, I don't know how many years out, you're, you're dropping down already. And you have all those beautiful, you know, improvements and buildings. So unless, you know, obviously you might do something later on, but, but look at, you know, you're taking some of your buildings that really needed work and being done for that $62 million. And and then with the busing, we have 25 buses that are 15 years or over. This will solve 10, 10 buses. Hopefully the, the next year we can do the same and do another 10 buses and will only be five. We'll only have five buses left that are really probably over the useful life. And we'll have improved the, you know, the life of all our buses, the average life of all our buses. So it really will be a big improvement.
Yeah. And I'll add, you know, your debt profile, even after this is all done, you know, we'll, we'll end in 2037 or 2030, yeah, 2037. So it's a relatively short, you know, turnaround. It's amazing to say we're in 2021. So you, you only have, quote unquote, 16 years left. So you know, you're, you're, you're paying back debt in a reasonable manner. It's not extended out, you know, 40 years. So, you know, they see there's a lot of principal being paid back. The, you know, all the, the debt service coverage is all kind of fit within, within range. So I, I have no concerns at all at this point in time for the district. I know I didn't get your exact answer to your question, but you know, from, from your, for your purposes, when we look at kind of your comparison to other people, that's always what drives the way we think about things. And you're, you're in the right category.
Good. Thank you. That helps. And, and to Bob's point, walking around the new Linwood, I commented that, yeah, it seems like $34 million really well spent. It's a beautiful facility that our students and community will enjoy for decades. And you're right that the way that we've borrowed is seems to be, you know, quite responsible with making the payments well within the useful life of such a great new facility.
Sal?
Hi Jamie, how you doing?
Good.
Is there a different, what's the difference in the categorization for the bonds, for the transportation and the buses as opposed to capital improvements? Is it, when you go to market, is it viewed with any more or less risk? Or is the pricing any different or anything like that?
Not at all. Yeah. So the, the main reason why it's, it's all about, it's still a general obligation of, of the, of the school district. So there's no difference from a security standpoint. You, you know, you're not going to get reimbursed on it, but frankly, we're not going to get reimbursed on, on the other project at this point. So no, there's no difference at all from a security standpoint. The real key here is it's the useful life of the asset that you're amortizing. So, you know, we've actually worked with George. I know who's on the phone. I keep referencing him. But we talked with him about, you know, how long we think these buses will be around for. So we've decided that a 10-year amortization fits well within, within that range. And that allows us to go out that far. So the market won't see anything different, to be honest. The way we're going to price this is the, the, all the underwriters are going to bid on this, or actually going to bid on as one big piece of debt. And then we're going to break it out by the series. So for budgeting purposes, you can see that the building's going to cost this much. And the buses are going to cost this much. But in real life, the market's going to see this one big debt issue.
You always borrow it within the useful life of the, you know, the asset that you're, you know, recurring. So, you know, it's like I said, 10 years and buses have a 12 to 15 year normal life, but most school districts go way beyond that if they, they have to. So.
Thanks.
Other questions?
We'll make some other decisions in the future, I should add. You know, obviously there's some other buses you'll have in, in the future. We can determine if we want to include them in future borrowings or if you, you know, we'll do something else. But my recommendation would be to kind of finance the, this time. And so we'll see how the, the rating process goes. And, you know, maybe we'll make some decisions that are different next year.
Any additional questions for Jamie? George, I just want to shout out and say it's good to see you.
I always, always overtalk George. We'll let him talk next time.
Thank you both.
Hi George.
We do have, we do have the bonds on the agenda this evening. So. Thanks for your work.
Let us know what happens and we'll, we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Take care. Okay.
Next item on our agenda is a budget update. Mr. Regal.
Okay. We adopted our preliminary budget was in back in January and then we had done an update in February. Now we're going to do an update in March, then in April, and then April 22nd, we'll adopt the proposed final budget. And then we'll try to finalize that. And I think it's the beginning of June, June 3rd or something like that. We'll be adopting the final budget for 2021, 22. It's hard to believe. Assumptions, these have been similar all the way through. Act One index is 3%. But in the year of countywide reassessment, you're limited to the index from the prior year. So our ceiling is 2.6% because we're not eligible for any kind of act one exception. So this, the, the largest we can increase taxes is 2.6%. You see the Peasars employer contribution rate, basically 30, almost 35% of every dollar spent in salary has to go to P S E R S as an employer rate, but then half of that comes back in the form of a state subsidy. So it's, it's basically half of that. The new certified assessment is 6 billion, 360 million. Based on the reassessment. We do have money in here for this next bond issue, which we have enough money, the bonds that we've done so far have, will cover Linwood and will cover phase one of the high school project. This new issue that we're approving tonight will cover phase two of the high school project. And then we'll be moving into the, the two elementary school climate control projects. These are the new positions. We have five teaching positions. Back in January and I think February, we had eight positions. But we dropped that down to five position as we refine the number of new employees we need for the next year. And the rest is pretty much the same. So we can go to the next. This is a reduction sheet, which shows first look back in January. Our, our shortfall was 3,868,000. That was back in January. We did some work. We did some reductions in salaries benefits. We got our second look in medical. Actually, the second look in medical is 10.68%. But we're taking 3% right now because a, a big portion, I think at least 5% of that would be considered COVID related in the sense that the rates are low because people haven't used the, used, you know, haven't gone for to doctors and so forth. So the, the costs are down, but we could end up taking that 10.8 or 68. And then all of a sudden, things clear up with the pandemic and everybody's going to get elective surgery and all those things they, they put off before and we're back up to the level we were. So that'll come out the way it'll come out. And that would actually knock down, I think at least $600,000 or $700,000, the remaining reduction in the medical. So that'll come out in the end of the budget, but I didn't want to take that out right away because it could be a temporary thing. Reduce the unemployment compensation. Things are getting better as far as the number of claims we have. So we originally had put in a number kind of thinking that we might be having larger payouts, but that, that, that's better. Capital maintenance repair. We moved all our capital maintenance repair to fund balance and committed for capital and took it out of this budget. So it'll be transferred from fund balance to the capital projects account. And done that way, that way, stay out of the, the general fund budget. We reduced charter school tuition. Charter school tuition has, has blown up to about 940,000. We're hoping that that'll be reduced when kids go back 100%. We reduced it from 940 to 640,000. Hopefully it'll go lower even yet, but you know, it, it is a cost to the school district. I think some people think the money just follows the, the charter schools, but it really is a cost to this district. And, you know, it, it creates a deficit. We put, had to put additional money into the vote tech because the number that they proposed in the vote tech approval tonight is higher than I, I had thought it was going to be. And the next couple of pieces are like crossing guards, supplies, propane, diesel fuel are all just refinements of line items in the budget. Capitalized interest is interest that we had financed and we're taking a little more to reduce this budget. And the bottom part is actually an increase in our collection rate based on historical numbers. And adding actually on the revenue side, more real estate taxes. So our shortfall in this year's budget is now is down to 1,441,000. So if you go to the next slide.
Before you go to the next slide, if I, I just want to make sure that people in the public and, and, and actually our board understands when you mentioned crossing guards, district rights, supplies, propane and such, what Bob has done there is taken trend data and looked at the last three to four years, what we have expended in those areas and come up with it with an average. I don't want anyone to think that we are eliminating crossing guards or, or reducing them. It, it, so he's, it is, it is more reflective of the actual expenditure over a period of time. Sorry about that.
Normally spent, yeah, we normally spend about 180 to 190,000 for crossing guards. We put it around a number of 200,000. We reduced it down to 190,000. And that's based on a three-year average of what our expenditures are. So we kind of look at trend data in a lot of line items because there's, you know, there's probably 8,000 line items in a, in a budget like this. This is a summary report that I normally do financing the budget. As you can see, the top part is revenues and that's prior to any tax increase. Then the expenditures, and then we have budgetary reserve. The shortfall, 4,680,000. We're using, like I, we showed you on the last page, 1,441,129. So that leaves you 2,627,000 needed from taxation. That is 0.435 for mileage increase, which comes out to the 2.6% increase that we need. Or that is our ceiling for the budget because of Act, Act One. That, it, that's $155 for the average taxpayer. If you go to the next slide, you can see some of the revenue there. Each line item, whether it's taxes or state sources, as you can see, 105 million of the 131 million is local tax, local taxation. 23, almost 24 million is state and 1.7 is federal. So, you know, we're very top heavy in the local area. Compared to a lot of districts, but this, this is how our breakout is of different types of taxes. So if you go to the next slide, this is a summary of our expenditure budget. As you can see, we are at 61,373,000 for salaries, 40,942,000 for benefits. Big part of the shortfall, shortfall or, or increase from one budget year to the next is in those two areas. We also have IU services and we have contract, other contracted services, legal services, those type of things are in that, that contracted services area. That's up 600,000. We have purchase services. As you can see, that's insurance. That's the vote tech tuition. A big part of that increase is the charter school tuition. We also have, we pay the community college, an operating share there also. The next section is supplies. As you can see, we're down a little bit. Equipment, we're up a little bit. And finally, debt service is up $1.3 million. So if you, if you can lift it up just a little bit, are you doing that, Anna? Can you, so I see the bottom total?
That, that's the whole screen, Bob. I'm sorry. It doesn't go any higher.
Okay, okay. Why don't we go to the next? The next slide. Okay. As you can see, 10-year average increases is averaged out to 2.85%. That's pretty good. I think most districts would, 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 would be, you know, kind of proud of that because you're in a 2.85% for a 10-year average is, is a very good average. Go to the next. Back one, I think. Oh, there we go. Cost drivers. Okay. If you looked at the expenditure, this shows you the major increases that are left. As of March 18th, you can see salaries and benefits and IU services, computer repairs, charter school tuition. These are the areas that you identify within our current budget to try to get that down and reduce that 1,441,000 in shortfall. Because basically it's like you're not bound, I don't have a balanced budget. Your revenues are short of your expenditures at this point by 1,441,000. That's with an increase of 2.6%. So in order to balance that budget, have revenues equal expenses, you have to reduce our budget 1,441,000. Now, really, that's not necessarily totally accurate because most people do not spend up to the budget. Every budget is put together by many different departments putting budgets together. So people don't always spend up to the, their full budget, but they, they do have their, you know, if they did, we would be short 1,441,000. So if you go to the next one, next one. This is our capital planning. This covers all the items that we plan on doing with fund balance committed to capital. Our fund balance set grown to 17,700,000. And everything over 8% of expenditures, we would have about $6 million over, over that. 8% of expenditures, which is kind of a benchmark. So we do have money available for capital. And we, we are planning on doing fun projects that are out of fund balance committed for capital. When we have facilities and finance meeting, Bridget had asked us to break it down by category because I thought, I thought that was a good idea to show you that these items are, are of value. They're show you that these items are, are of value, there is a group some that are are just energy efficiency, there's groups that are safety and security. Food service, equipment has not been replaced in years. Technology, the point-of-sale system needed to be totally replaced. And technology, we instituted and sat down with Rob and said that it would be a good idea to have infrastructure for technology paid for out of capital as opposed to trying to fit it every year into a budget, you know, and not may, maybe being able to get that in there, so. We have 1.5 million there and on the fiscal agenda, there's about, I think, five items that need to be approved because a lot of these items have a long lead time, they have buses, for instance, that are coming out of a bond issued, have a 15-week lead time. Some of these projects need to go out to bid and some of these projects have, there, there's items like doors that have a 12 weekly time for specialty doors, so. I think it's, you know, that's why we're getting approval now because we need to order it and have it be able to come in so that we can install it for September, so. Why don't we go to the next slide? So in April, we'll have another finance liaison meeting and show refinements and then April 22nd, adopt the proposed final budget. And then June 3rd, adopt the final budget, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions from the board? Antoinette?
Yeah, thanks. As always, a very thorough presentation, so thank you. I, I just had a question because I think that it's been in the news that through the American Rescue Act that schools would get funds from the federal government. So I don't know, you know, if, if we know yet what we would get or, or, or what that is, but I is, is that in the calculations or would that be something that we would not, I mean, I, I just, do you have information on that?
That would not be in those calculations this, this evening, Antoinette. We have not received anything official, there have been estimates, I think there was even a piece in the paper last week identifying a potential of 1.3 million for us, I'm actually a little disappointed.
I saw that too and I was hoping it wasn't right.
I was hoping that it, I, I was hoping it would be substantially more. But, you know, it, it's 1.3 million is, is nothing to sneeze at. However, there are, you know, we are to look at what a term, not a term that we have coined, but that others have, learning loss. And what type of programs and things, so as soon as we learn more about that, I believe Brian Kizer from our business office attended a webinar today to get a little more information about, you know, how those funds can best be spent. But to briefly answer your question, they're not incorporated into the, into the.
From an accounting standpoint, and this has happened before in prior years and what you would do is amend the budget possibly. So if you had to add 1.3 million dollars on the revenue side, you would add either 1.3 of spending that you don't have currently in the budget, or maybe in some cases part of that is replacing loss of revenue from the state, you know, funding, so it's already in the budget, but you're not going to get enough revenue from the state side, so. So normally you, what you would see as us approving an amendment to the budget later on in the year as things, things get clearer. And then you'd be adding to both sides of the budget.
And this money is, is, is for one-time expenses, it's not it's not money that we could hire additional staff with because when this grant ends, it ends. And there were issues, I think it, was it in 2011 with the ARRA money, federal money? Where some districts got in trouble for, you know, getting involved in expenditures that went past.
They were doing things, things, I remember they were doing things like full-day kindergarten, but then when the funding disappeared, then they were stuck either, you know, paying for full-day kindergarten or, or, you know, doing, I guess, doing something you know, lengthy, I don't know how, what they did, but they had to reduce back down to that level or or fund it, so.
And the other piece is that, it's my understanding that these, these new government funds have to be at least committed, if not expensed by the end of 2023. So we'll get more guidance over the next couple of weeks and have a better understanding. I'm hoping that perhaps we might be able to use them for some of the HVAC projects that we have lined up because that may fit into once we see the guidelines, I know that ventilation is one of the items that was being discussed in terms of the uses of these funds. Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay, well, thanks, Bob, we'll check in with you next time.
Okay. Thanks.
And next agenda, you know what, it's time for a seventh inning stretch.
Brain break.
There's a really easy one, it's called stand up, turn around, sit down, you may recall that. Do the kids do?
No, it's okay, go ahead, Laura, I was just trying to figure out if we're really in the seventh inning.
I was just gonna ask if the kids do like cuckoo kangaroo or any of those things. That's what my daughter does to move her body when she has the wiggles.
Yeah, yeah, they do, they have all kinds of things, they have those, they're actually little things on little videos they have that are dancing videos, and I was just talking to some high school kids yesterday who were saying they, they want to do even more brain breaks, so like doesn't matter the age, we all could use a brain break, right?
Especially on Zoom, especially on Zoom.
Next agenda item is board liaison reports and you folks can correct me, but I believe that we're looking at finance and facilities, is that correct?
They are the two groups that met, however, Mr. Feinberg, we, we're going to have a discussion on the principles of govern, the PSBA principles of governance and leadership.
Okay, can we bring those up?
Anna is ready to put those onto the screen for your discussion.
Great. Not the most readable. What I can say about this is that, you know, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association is 125 years old this year. And in terms of a set of principles, guiding principles for board governance and leadership, this represents the, the accumulated collective experience and expertise regarding board service and it's basically focused on improving student outcomes, but it's it's a set of principles that outline good governance and the way that boards should work. I think perhaps what we can do, I think the board members have, have this because we used it. This was the basis for our board self-evaluation exercise that we went through a couple of weeks ago. And we could perhaps get this posted on the website if it's not already. And we'll, we'll be doing a couple of things with this, one is later in the agenda. We, we will adopt a resolution saying that that we endorse these principles and this is a good roadmap and guideline for our board and any school boards going forwards. In terms of best practices. I don't know how much more, you know, I can say about it, but it's, it's good stuff. Especially after you've spent some time serving on a school board. These really hit home, so I don't know if, if any board members have any comments or questions at this time?
I think this is a, a really helpful outline. I know PSBA has recommended having it posted in our boardroom, so when we are able to safely gather in person again, this would be nice to display both as kind of of a reminder of our, our daily interactions as a board. Some of it is, is aspirational and helping you focus, but certainly from the self-assessment that the board recently completed. I think we are, we are fortunate to be able to say we are a board that really does work pretty well together. We've missed out on some opportunities for board retreat and like shared learning with the with the format of this past year and those are things that we'd like to build in, there's definitely ideas for how to improve and, and these principles are good guiding lights for those interests in, in making sure that our board is effective as possible.
Thanks, Bridget. Any other comments from other board members? Okay, thanks, we'll, we'll be voting on a resolution adopting these later in the agenda. Thank you. Okay, next up. Facilities and, and finance, Dave, you want to start off?
Liaisons met last Thursday, I'll go, I'll, I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief because we discussed most of this stuff already. You just saw Rob put up the capital maintenance costs, you see a lot of those in the agenda this evening, all those you have been briefed on prior to this, there improvements in energy efficiency, 15 security, food service and technology, about 1.5 million, I think most of the change, or most of those items you'll see later on this evening, the one change for, for that are the buses, which were moved from a terminal fund to a, a bond funding mechanism, so everything else you, you've pretty much seen. We also were briefed a bit on Linwood, as, as often happens, well, actually, it happened this year due, due to COVID, a lot of the contractors are coming to us with some additional costs that, that weren't anticipated originally, that are above and beyond what they they originally estimated. Those costs are related to everything from PPE, additional cleanings, inefficiencies due to screenings and so forth, and also the price of materials skyrocketed through COVID because of reduced production and everything else, so we're getting, so we're getting some asks for additional monies from our contractors. It's pretty common in, in, in kind of projects, this one is particularly large because, because of COVID, CB Development currently is, is negotiating with them and bringing the costs into reasonable territory. We also had some additional costs for the cafeteria, the estimates, I believe, originally around 330. After getting done with it, with the drawings, adding in some of the, the improvements, those costs went up a little bit to somewhere in the 400s, for 10 to 450. Good news is, even with those additional costs from the contractors and from cafeteria, we still have a very, very healthy balance in our contingency costs. Once all those costs are all said and done, we'll probably have just under a million left in our contingency costs to complete the project, and all that's left really is the demolition of the old building and the new field, so even if there are massive delays in summer, which, you know, can cost a couple hundred thousand dollars, we should, we still should have plenty left in our, in our budget to completely Linwood without much of an issue. And then a blast from the past, maybe you may, may recall before COVID hit and the world ended, we were looking at improvements for the HVAC systems and electrical systems for Chatham Park and Cooper Town. Those are back now, that, those are now back. And we got a couple bids in, one of them was from Snyder Hoffman and one was from SDE, both very good firms. The SDE budget came in about $40,000 less than, than Snyder at about 570K. So we're gonna recommend that we accept their, their, their bid to, to, to implement those improvements. Basically, we'll, we'll be replacing the ventilation system, the, the, the old lights, upgrading the HVAC. And that will be coming, coming down, down the pipe, so. More to come on with the, on, on, on the on the costs, the COVID costs, contractors will be committing, most of them seem pretty reasonable, a couple of them, like I said, CB is talking to. Everything else is being pretty, looking in pretty good shape.
Just a point of clarification, the budgets that you quoted for the two HVAC contracts, that's for preliminary like design and, and spec.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear, right? Million-dollar project, what's the scope of work, but that's for picking the engineering firm that will do the initial design.
About that, I'm, I'm engineer, so I see that budget and that's my budget, so, so yes, no, you're absolutely right, that's, that's for the design cost, these are, these are big projects, these will be replacing, you know, boilers, chillers, that kind of stuff, so good stuff. Stuff that, that, that's needed.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions for Dave? Bridget?
So I have the facility or the finance liaison report, I'll just say that we met on the 9th and gave a shout out to the participants who were Dr. Rishi, Mr. Regal, Mr. Kizer, and Mr. Feinberg, Dr. Crispin, Mr. Fleischer, myself, and then Mr. Schlesinger from PFM. So our presentation largely was the topics earlier in the agenda on the bond financing and the revisions to the budget, so I think that covered it well.
Any questions for Bridget? Thank you. All right, we'll move into some of the stuff. I'll accept the motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $9,000. Moved in second, any discussion? This one's a roll call, Mr. Regal? You muted?
I sympathize with that young boy who couldn't talk. Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Mister, Ms. Larson? Okay, Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Cento?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yeah, safe voting, yes, thanks, thank you, Bob. I'll accept the motion to approve dis- dispersments from the following funds as listed. Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc. And owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc. And authorized change orders totaling $380,343.17 as listed.
Crispin moves.
For a second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
All in favor? Of the cafeteria, the extension of the cafeteria at Linwood, remind me, and Ken might have said something about it earlier today, other than just topically announcing a big change order for Linwood, Bob, but what, what's the, what's the deal with that?
Well, originally, the way it was designed, the cafeteria plus the auditorium would have been where all the seating was, but it really was too tight and when we did a walkthrough, and it, there was a need to, you know, it made more sense to extend that, the cafeteria. And it's within the contingency. There's still a lot of contingency left, so it kind of felt that, that, that extension was needed to keep all students in the same location as opposed to some being in, in two different, you know, two different locations, so.
The way it was set originally, students would be in two different rooms, they would be in one room and then they'd be on really what is the stage of the gymnasium, so getting them all into one room was, was deemed, you know, a, a, a good improvement. In addition, every school that we've redone so far from Chestnut Old to Manoa, the, there, we've increased enrollment, so if we have enrollment. So if we have the same thing happen at Linwood, this would give us additional space for the potential of traditional students. So it's kind of a buffer for us, if you will.
Got it. Thanks. And when it opens, it'll be newer than the Brick and Brew, the newest restaurant and having-
There you go. You can compare the two.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the purchase of custodial equipment for the Linwood Elementary School project at a cost not to exceed $48,017.07.
Moved, Minji.
Okay.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
They gotta keep that beautiful new building nice and clean. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Special Education Intergovernmental Funding and Service Agreement with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit in the amount of $654,856.
Crispin moves.
Move second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, could somebody just us an overview? We've got this item on the agenda and two upcoming ones related to the IU and other services. It'd be helpful just to get a little context about the way in which we work with these organizations and fund them.
Okay. Our budget is, is really has a lot of small budgets within big budget, you know, so, so there's different areas, especially in special ed where they have, they have to work with the IU. So this is actually when, you know, our staff, people services works with, with IU services and they put together a budget every year. These are the students that need this type of service or whatever. And, and, and then they cost it out, just like they cost out for every district in the county. And then they provide us with the itemized budget, which is the 654,000. And I think there's a smaller budget for 110,000. That's usually a withholding that they take out of one of our subsidies, but that covers usually educational materials for specialized students. I think they're specialized. I'm really not sure, but I know every district gets a very similar number. And then we also have the VOTEC, which the VOTEC is based on our student who are taking advantage of the VOTEC. We're, you know, in comparison to the, all the other sending areas and what our percentage is. And, and then it's broken down into a budget that the VOTEC is putting together. Our share of the budget is $800,000. So, and those are just budgets within, within our budget. So.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the budget and adopt resolution number 56 for the Delaware County Vocational Technical Schools for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year in the amount of $14,960,102. Haverford share is $807,412.
Snodgrass moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the DCIU General Operating Budget and adopt the resolution for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 in the amount of $9,765,889 with Haverford share being 110,528,000, excuse me, $110,528.05.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
And all, all three of these are reflected in our current budget. So Nicole and Pupil Services puts all those three line items in, in, in the budget as part of her first piece of the budget.
Thank you, Bob. I'll accept the motion to approve the purchase of one utility truck and three cargo vans for district-wide maintenance and facilities work at a cost not to exceed $173,594.43, which is the state contract pricing through Co-Stars.
What's moved? Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the purchase of 240 MacBook Air computers for teachers at a cost not to exceed $227,520.
And move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the proposal from Johnson Controls. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thanks. From Johnson Controls, Inc. for district-wide HVAC upgrades at a cost not to exceed $186,510.
What's moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the quotation for scope of work from Johnson Controls, Inc. for upgrading the fire alarm system at Haverford High School at a cost not to exceed $115,000.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the quotes from AG Morrow Company listed below for replacing various doors throughout the district at a total cost not to exceed $115,230.
Crispin moves.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
How many doors is this? I see numbers six and seven and eight and nine, and I'm just wondering.
It's hard to tell because like, for instance, the high school, it's a bunch of auditorium doors, but there are numbers on some of those. Maybe, Dr. Rishi, you have the total or?
No, Bob, I don't.
But there's a couple, two, two locations where there's multiple doors. And these are out, a lot of them are exterior doors, which are heavy, you know, and secure doors. They're not, they're not just like a regular door, you know, to an office building. So, so they're, they're expensive and they're, some, a lot of them are custom, you know, so that's why some of these have as long as a 12 week lead time. So.
Doors and plumbing, never cheap.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to approve the purchase of 10 2022 72-passenger propane school buses through Bright Bill Body Works at a cost not to exceed $1,052,100 using the Co-Stars state contract pricing and includes a $9,000 credit for trade-in vehicles.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept a donation of $44,000 from the Haverford Township Education Foundation's Haverford Helping Neighbors Program to assist district students and families in need.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the assessment appeal settlement resolutions as listed.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the proper officers of the board to work with financial advisor PFM Financial Advisors LLC and bond counsel Saul Ewing Ornstein and Lair LLP to proceed with the issuance of 2021 series bonds.
Move.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Just a reminder that this is for $10 million of financing. $9 million that would go for the facility projects and $1 million for the 10 new propane buses that we just approved.
Thanks, Bridget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the purchase of new food service equipment for various locations throughout the district through Trimark Food Craft at a cost not to exceed $60,183.77.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the retirements and resignations as listed.
Snodgrass moved.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Just want to point out that there's some long-serving folks here. Want to thank them. Catherine Frank, 21 years. Pat Novino, 30 years. Denise Pelka, 29 years. Kane Thompson, 21 years. So we thank them for, for their long service to the township and the community and our school district. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the appointments as listed.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Move.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the educational service contracts as listed.
Crispin moves.
Snodgrass second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve a high school swim team member to participate in the PIA double A state championships to be held in Mechanicsburg, PA on Friday, March 19th and Saturday, March 20th, 2021.
Snodgrass moved.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Did we watch this?
Who, who is?
I went out with, with Mr. Dunagan. A lot of things have been live streamed.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I know that we have live streamed our meets and I'm wondering if anyone knows if this is live streamed. I will look it up. This is amazing. Congratulations to the swimmer.
Do we know who this, who the student is?
I believe Erica mentioned the name earlier, but it escapes me now.
Yeah, I think it's Katia Yuroslenova.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I was just going to say, um, the, there's a Twitter account for Haverford Athletics that might be good to follow for getting a report on how she does. And maybe there's video clips that go along.
Well, that's great. Did we vote?
Approved. Yes.
Yay.
Aye.
Aye.
Susan usually does that for us.
Okay, so motion carries, right?
Yes.
I'll accept the motion to approve a revision to secondary instructional time template to the hybrid schedule to eliminate the cohorts, to return students to in-person learning April 6th. The dismissal times and virtual learning time in the PM will remain the same.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yay.
Been a long haul. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to adopt school board policy 218.3, discipline of students convicted slash educated of sexual assault as discussed at the March 4th, 2021 school board meeting.
Snodgrass moved.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to adopt the resolution for PSBA's Principles of Governance and Leadership. And I had threatened to read this, but it's 10 o'clock and if folks want to read it, they can look it up on the website. All in, I have a mo- motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board reports. Ari?
No reports tonight.
Antoinette?
Just very quickly to again say thank you to the Haverford Township Education Foundation and everyone who's donated. It's really just exemplary of how wonderful our community is that we're accepting this donation. So thank you to all involved.
Dave?
Just want to thank our students for, for, for coming in from Linwood, learned, learned a few things about people who I was not all that aware of in our history, but people who, who, who know all of our history. Thank you for, for the two students who came from, from VOTEC and Dr. Rishi. I just want to thank you for your comments about the events in Georgia. I'm sure that the, the victims are on their prayers. So thank you very much for, for, for saying something. And that's it for me tonight.
Thanks, Dave. Laura?
Yeah, it's been a busy few weeks. Last week I was at the finance liaison meeting. This week I did the Linwood tour. So thanks to Ken and everybody involved in, in setting that up. Beautiful. It's going to be amazing. The floors look awesome. All of the storage space and all of the classrooms and, oh my gosh, I'm so excited. I can't wait to see it finally, finally done. It's, we're coming to an end. So that was wonderful. Thanks for setting that up for us. We can see it. I was at the Manoa PTO meeting. Thanks for having us and for inviting us and giving us a chance to talk with parents and be part of that group. What else? Next week is Advocacy Day, Monday Advocacy Day. I don't teach on Mondays, so I'm hopeful that I'll be able to attend all of the Advocacy Day meetings with all of our state senators and representatives. And I think there's a bunch of different meetings set up for that day. So I'll be part of that as well. And the last thing I want to say, it was so great to see the students. I love that we're doing that. So thanks for bringing them every meeting. It's really nice. And especially to the students that are doing the career and technical education. My husband is an automotive technician, so I hope you stick with it. It's near and dear to my heart. And, you know, electric, he's a Tesla mechanic now, but, you know, there's a lot of future there. So keep up with that. It's really important. So that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Laura. Sal?
Just one item from the PSBA liaison report that, that gets sent to me. Every year, PSBA puts out a state of education report. I believe there's going to be a paper copy that gets sent to all members at some point next month, but the digital copy is available. It's, it's a little lengthy, but I always find that there's some good statistics in there statewide to kind of reference. And I did send that via email to the board, but if anybody needs that link again, feel free. And I think PSBA has it on the website. I always find it an interesting read, you know, in bits and pieces. So.
Thanks, Sal. And thanks for sending that out.
Yeah.
Susan?
I'm going to talk a little bit about, lucky that those boys came to see us tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about the IU and the, the Technical School National Technical Honor Society Program. Usually it's a very large event that we as board members get invited to and recognize these kids. I'm going to tell you what the purpose of this honor society is to reward excellence in workforce education, to develop self-esteem, pride, and encourage students to reach for higher levels of achievement, to promote business and industry's critical workplace values, which are honesty, responsibility, initiative, teamwork, productivity, leadership, and citizenship, to help schools build and maintain effective partnerships with local business and- with local business and industry, and to champion a stronger, more positive image for workforce education in America. So this was a great night for us to have an opportunity to meet those two young men that are taking part of this. We have indeed had some National Technical Honor Society inductees, and I will read their names. We've had Jack Duler for the electrical and the rest are medical careers. Colleen Chung, congratulations to all these kids. Mia Chopin, Madison Dougherty, Caitlin Eng, Grace Hetzinger, Ian Kratzinger, Lauren McAdams, Emma Peta, Nicole Rodriguez, Anika Wilson, Rachel Yokum, Vivian Chen, Sammy Young, Richa Kokani. And in exercise therapy is Shauna Mohren. In engineering and robotics, congratulations, Kichira Wang. And in medical career, careers is Angelica Chohin. And I congratulate every one of these kids, uh, for doing such a great job. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was there's something called a making a difference award that comes out of the IU. We have, um, I would say almost annually given this award to someone in our district who has made a difference. They're sponsored by the Rock, Derwe County Right to Education Local Task Force, but I'm putting it back out for all my board members to listen to. The purpose of the award is to recognize students with disabilities who have overcome challenges or barriers or adults or students who go above and beyond to include students with disabilities. And our goal this year is to recognize at least one student and one adult per district. And, um, Nicole DaBattistelli is usually very, uh, aggressive in making sure that we get, we have so many people that we can nominate, but I think it's an important thing. And I think it's an important thing for all of us as, uh, members of the board to think about all these people that make a difference in our lives. And perhaps you can think of someone that you'd like to nominate. I'd be happy to help in that department. Other than that, I just want to say one last thing. Sal, thank you for sending that. I noticed that all the responses from educators is, is, I guess the complaint is planning. They didn't plan for this. They didn't plan for that. They didn't plan for anything. And I would like to say for the last year, all we've done is plan, plan, plan. Jennifer Saskas, Sarah Christensen, Nicole, and every single one of our administration has done nothing but plan, plan, plan. However, government let us down and it's very apparent in that, in that report. So please read it. I, when I was a principal, I told teachers the most important thing you do is plan. Never walk into a classroom and only have five minutes ready because that's gonna be a very long day. Unfortunately, government didn't plan for us. They could have. So anyway, thank you, Larry. It's late. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Susan. Bridget, what do you have for us?
I have a few things. Um, looking back over the last two weeks, it's amazing how much stuff gets jammed in. Some of the things I've, I was able to do, like the PTO meeting and the building tour. But I also attended the Delco Legislative Council, um, where we were looking at, um, we had, um, PCCY present about, um, funding inequities and, and advocacy around, um, fair funding. Um, and then had a presentation from Joe Cerisi, who's on the House Ed Committee and Special Ed Funding Commission. So, um, that is Delaware, uh, school district directors and the IU, um, learning about legislative, uh, matters so that we can be effective in advocating for better funding and programmatic solutions for our public schools. I also attended the third and, um, a four-part series from PSBA on, uh, Leadership Workshop, and this one was on professional development, um, and looked at board, like, necessary leadership skills and training and ways to, uh, support a positive board culture for effective operations. Um, I did, uh, weekly buzz where we're, um, or a couple of those over the last two weeks where the topics have, you know, kind of week to week, the topics change with the trending times. Um, testing is a, is one that people are focused on. It does seem like most school districts are opting to complete their testing within this school year. Um, early on, there were some schools that were talking about maybe the benefits of, um, having summer school help get kids more ready, but it sounds like now everyone's trying to get them in, in the spring. Um, uh, they're talking about the American Rescue Plan and the potential resources that are coming to districts for the, um, funding programs that will help with learning loss or COVID mitigation. But then also there's, um, new talk kind of about things like graduation and prom. So people are looking ahead for those year-end celebrations as well. Um, I wanted to mention that on today's, um, all directors statewide call, it featured our very own Larry Feinberg in his new role as leader of the Pennsylvania Charter Change Coalition. And, uh, he had the platform for a half hour to talk about his important work in advocacy in, um, getting, uh, reforms to our charter funding system. Um, and I just wanted to give a shout out to all of the staff who are, I'm sure, working maybe even at this very moment to get our elementary schools ready for Monday. I bet they'll be working over the weekend, getting all of the, um, all of the desks and everything ready for the, um, the full group of students to come in. Um, and I hope everyone has a good week next week with that return to school and, and kind of a new first day of school feeling. Um, and then hope everyone has a happy and safe, uh, spring break, a well-deserved break. Um, and, but one, uh, like we heard some concerns about with traveling and socializing in the nice weather. Encourage everyone to please keep up with the safe gatherings and, and the masking so that we can um, end the school year with everybody, uh, in our buildings and classrooms and, uh, that, uh, we, these, um, plans that have been worked on so hard to get to this point that we're able to see those through to the end of the school year.
Thanks, Bridget. The board met an executive session to review pending tax assessment appeal litigation with legal counsel and to discuss personnel matters and processes. Our next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on April eighth, twenty twenty-one, right here at same Zoom place. With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Move. Second.
Thank you, everybody. Good luck.
By the way, since, since Joe Martin is longer on the board, I have to wave the flag just real quick. Tomorrow, Drexel is making our twenty-five-year return tournament at one fifteen. Taking a half day to watch us get destroyed by Illinois, but we're still back. It's all that's important. I want to throw it out there. So, go Dragons.
David's female team is in too.
What's that?
Coach.
Female team and the girls.
Yes, the ball, I'm, I'm, thank you very much. They're, they're both in this here. I think it's one of the first years that ever happened for, for us.
Coach Spiker lives in Haver Town, David.
Yes, I know. And by the way, when the men lose, I'll, I'll, I'll be watching the women. So that, so, so yes, they're both there. And, and yes, so we have a, we have a coach. We actually have a maybe, maybe second team ever to, uh, beat a number one seed. We'll see how that goes. I have my doubts, but what the hell.
Good luck.
Okay, good luck. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.